"The Declaration of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation under God, in the judicial and legal service of this court."
"The Star will carry you visitors to part one. That's where you can come to the meeting. State your name and address. If you have any questions or comments on anything being on tonight's agenda, you may not speak right now." Mrs. Elder. Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Laser.
Here.
Mrs. Mayes. Mrs. Kozar.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. George.
Dr. Lockland.
Here.
Now here you visit here is part of one. If you have any questions or comments on anything that's nice and yet you can just say to me and address. There is a time at the end of the meeting when you can speak to these that are on. I would like to move for the adoption of approval of the minutes for resolution number 11.
Second.
The movement second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions.
I recommend that we move on resolution number 012, the approval of an egregious sale, purchase of property. This was discussed at my last meeting.
Second.
The movement second. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions.
And I just announced that at the conclusion of the sixth grade camp review, you'll see a younger, more intelligent and attentive person sitting there.
You want me to do it over there? It's a hard hand, Mike.
Hard. I don't know.
See, you love the team.
I have no legislative report on education and planning.
I'm always thinking of the district teaching group. This is something they look forward to every year.
No, it's okay, Melissa. You can say it. We just concluded, believe it or not, the 42nd year of sixth grade camp. So the dates that you see below, if they're approved, would be for the 43rd edition of sixth grade camp. Am I right that this is, you concluded your third year? Melissa, remember, has just concluded her third year as the camp director. She followed Mrs. Bates. And as you listen to her presentation, one of the things that Melissa has done as camp director is really review everything that's done at camp and has listened to staff members that have been there for a long time. She's been there for a long time and they have made some significant changes to what happens over those three days that kids are there. And I appreciate that. And the fact that A, she was willing to make some changes and B, that she's taken three years to really work through things and work through with staff members. Those changes, Mr. Music was at camp again this year, which I think is great. Please don't talk about my time on the rifle range. I appreciate that.
I haven't been to the rifle range today.
Thank you. That's right. But anyway, I do want to turn it over to Melissa. And she has with her Sherri Durgon and Macy Logan. And they'll talk about some of the things that were integrated into camp.
Thank you. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation this year because I wanted to make sure that we had enough time to get through everything. But I really wanted to just say, by thanking everyone on the board, and who we so support with the sixth grade camp. I know, was talking to Macy and I see some teachers in the building and I know they went to camp as students and then they went as counselors and some of your children have been to camp. And it's such a memorable experience that impacts our students for such a, some of them a lifetime. You know, sometimes they get to do things at camp that they would never ordinarily get to do. And we tried to add a little bit of that this year as well. Again, I want to thank, you know, Mr. Music for being there. It makes me feel really relaxed and comfortable knowing that there's someone in addition to Josh Hauser at the rifle range that I can trust, that has the best interest interests of the students and their safety that hard. And I really do appreciate you being there. And I want to throw in a little thank you to the Montview Student Leadership Team, which is led by Mr. Tom Melchick, the music teacher. They donated a really nice outdoor sound system, portable sound system to us. Our sound system died the previous year. And we were looking around at some things and I was looking small and Tom came in with something big and it was great and waterproof, which is really important at camp. And we use that for like the campfire songs and the all-important title for. So we really need a good sound system up there. So we appreciate that from Montview. A real quick breakdown. We served 92.8, 93% of our sixth graders attended camp this year. Montview had 97 students, faculty 78, and LES 109. So 284 out of our 366 graders attended camp. That's in addition to a little higher number of counselors this year because we added in a program that Sherri and Macy are going to talk about. And we were so happy to have some extra counselors come up with special training to help with that. So normally we'd have just 19 or 20 high school counselors and we had just over 20 counselors with each of the sessions. And then the teachers also, we had anywhere from 33 to 35 teachers coming along. And the teachers are such an invaluable resource. Not only are they helping with the core classwork that the students do, the language arts writing that they do, the science, the math, the social studies, but it's really nice for the students and even the high school counselors to see them in a little different element and get to know them a little bit better as well. One of the things that Mr. Frank mentioned was some updates that we did. So a lot of things have been talked about when I was going as, you know, a teacher that was helping with the archery station and the cookhouse. And these things kept being brought up repeatedly. Getting the kids back into the cabins a little bit earlier at night so they're not cranky and exhausted. We have some time for decent showers, which is really helpful. And, you know, getting rid of maybe some of the things that weren't serving us well anymore. So we did some flex shops. In the first one, we talked about the things that were in the camp book that the students have. Also, it was really important to me, I'm a huge recycling fan, to cut down on the amount of paper that we keep printing and printing. And so we were able to do that with this as well, to reduce the size of the books that the students have and the teachers have. We eliminated a few activities and we added some. We stopped making ice cream. It sounded sad, but only one teacher said, "Oh, we're not making ice cream for it. It's messy. It's gross. It takes a handful of us about an hour and a half afterwards to clean up." And the kids get a really itty-bitty little peels during the ice cream out of it. And it's interesting as a science lesson with the mixture of the ice and the water and then, you know, it surrounds the cream and the capsule and everything. But it was time to go. So we dropped the ice cream. Also, our teachers had approached me about doing something other than kites. And I will say that the supplies for the kites and the kite decorating was a rather large chunk of the supply expenses every year. So I was going to talk to them about that. They informed me that it takes at least six to eight of their art lessons away from the sixth graders preparing the kites between planning what they're going to do and then the actual coloring and designing of the kites. And I started buying them just waterproof markers because it's always a little bit wet up there. So what we came up with to take its place was a different evening activity that was still art-related. And I wasn't sure how it was going to go over. They did leaf rubbings. They went out and they collected all different kinds of leaves. And I thought, hmm, these kids are 12 and 13. Do they want to do leaf rubbing? They really liked it. They would take different kinds of leaves and they would lay them under the paper and spell out their names. Or somebody made like a superhero design. Somebody would do a car design with all different leaf rubbing shapes. They really liked it. So we're going to continue with that and still look into some other things as well. There's a nature artist by the name of Amy Goldsworthy, who makes really neat nature designs. And we were thinking if we could have the kids do that while they were out and about during the day and take some pictures and get those out to their leaf deeds, then they would have that memory preserved as well. So those were two of the things that we got rid of. One of the things that we added was a game night. We were thinking that a lot of these students don't play board games anymore. And there's so much benefit to playing board games. There's the social interaction. There's the sportsmanship aspect. There's planning, strategizing. And just getting them back into the cabin, sitting down. And the teachers would make maybe a frozen pizza or a frozen cookie dough. And it was like a little gathering of this special group. So the sixth grade teachers got together and they made me my school to offer some suggested games that they had, maybe their recess kits or things that the students liked. I got three big plastic bins full of games. We took off. The kids loved it. The counselors loved it. They even were inventing games that weren't there, things that they knew that the kids could get up and move around with the active. And it was a really good hit. So I was very glad about that. I know there's a lot of that fit to having those nice sit-downs with some friends and playing some games. We still, of course, have the art, the tie-dye, the campfires thing, night kites, which were fantastic, rifle archery, our kayaking, and our Pennsylvania gaming condition presentation, which is really nice. They come up with all three sessions. They have animal pelts and they pass them out for the kids to see. And it's amazing to me how much our students already know about all this wildlife. I'm impressed by our students. Awesome. And this happens. But one other thing that we did add, Holly Loperson, who's a German teacher, had brought one year something called Breakfast Journal. And I said, "That's a little weird. What is that?" Well, it just looks like a little small book, got a soft back to it. And every page is something the kids can do to wreck the journal. They can put it up at the archery room, you can shoot at it. They can drop it in the lake. They can dunk ink on the tie-dyes. They can almost like little workshop things and all different things. They really loved it. The teachers thought it was awesome. It was for, it was a big bang for the buck. There was one journal for each group. It was nice for downtime. It was nice for travel time. I saw kids pulling in light string and getting it all dirty. And they loved it. They said, "We've successfully wrecked our journals." So that's going to become something as well. One thing that we really want to replace is the balloon launch. I feel that launching latex balloons is counter to what we want to teach at camp. And so we're looking for a suitable alternative to balloon launch. And Abigail Wilson Mahala, one of the junior high class teachers, has been talking to me about initiating an outdoor cooking station. And I did talk to the rangers about that and they have an area that we can do that without having to worry about if there's bad weather. It's an open pavilion. So it's open, but there's cover. There's already a fire pit there. And all I need to do is have a teacher that's willing to beam up the station and who will be introducing outdoor cooking as one of our activities. At this point, what I would really like to do is something, I was very impressed when Sherri Durgon came to me as our elementary STEM teacher and said that she was going to introduce a STEM activity that she and Mr. Page worked on as a pilot program for LES. And when I put her in touch with Macy Logan, because she had some ideas of collaborating with capstone, and I thought, wow, that's really awesome. And I will never be able to explain the science that they did as well as they do. And so at this point, I thank you again. And I'm going to have Sherri and Macy come on up. Thank you.
So Frank's not here because he retired at the end of last year, the last minute. But Frank was our sixth grade teacher at LES who did all of the science. So I went right to him and asked, "What correlated with the sixth grade curriculum near the time of sixth grade camp that we might go to work with?" And a lot of environmental science was at that point. So Frank and I talked about water filters. Is that something that the kids could design and create, could do that in the classroom and then transport to camp and test them in a different setting at camp? In the classroom, epic success. The kids did phenomenally. The water filters were phenomenal. At camp, epic fail. Epic fail because Lake Harris is beautiful and it's clear. And the kind of tests that we were doing, especially after talking with Macy, really all we could do at a sixth grade level at camp was test turbidity. And the lake was just, it's just clear and beautiful. And the water actually came out dirtier because of the clay that the students used in their water filters than it originally went in. So epic fail at camp. That engineering project will not be repeated. But that was only half of our goal. And, you know, that's what engineering is. You take a look at what works and go from there. So we'll try something different for next year. Don't know what that is yet, but we'll figure it out. The second part of this big initiative was stream study. Because the water filters kind of really went well with stream study. The stream study at camp is for the students to take a look at what's around them and predict based on the riparian zone, the land that's right around the stream, what the quality of the water in the stream is like. Then they test it by collecting the macroinvertebrates that live there. But what are macroinvertebrates? They're so nice. They are critters that are large enough that you can see with your eyes. They don't have a backup, so they have an excellent scope. So we found all kinds of nymphs and larva and old roe and adult gray and any grayfish. So if you get a chance to take a look at any of this at sixth grade camp, VVD, you'll see examples of all of those critters there. But they test the quality by the critters that they collect. Each kind of macroinvertebrate can tolerate a different level of pollution. I know all of this because I've been teaching the stream study at camp for a very long time. But a lot of the other teachers don't. And so without me there to teach the stream study to all three buildings, a lot of the teachers sort of felt very unconfident, unsure. They didn't have work trained. That's not in their curriculum. They don't teach that. So I wanted to hang out with Macy and ask her how she felt about bringing her capstone kids in because this is what they do in capstone. They do this. So let's bring some high school kids in and have them teach what they learned. Because that's an awesome partnership. And it turned out, on my end, it was awesome. I couldn't have been happier. There are some things I wish I would have done, like meet with those students before camp, give them an idea of what they were going to be doing, but before we actually got there. What we want to do for next year is to make sure that that happens. Meet those students before they come to camp. Give them a script, an idea of how the stream study is different from what they do in capstone. A much bigger stream with what Macy does with them. When they come to camp, we're talking small. So that a lot of the strategies for collecting the macroinvertebrates can't be used there regardless. They did such a great job relating to the kids. The sixth graders were excited that senior high kids were here to teach them. And so they, okay, they like me. I'm not going to lie. They like me. We get along. We have a good relationship. And it's a lot of fun. But it's a whole different perspective when it's coming from a senior or a junior. It's just different. And I think that the girls, because they were, they were all girls, had a great time. And I think maybe
Yeah, I wanted to give you the perspective from the teacher of capstone. So this is the animal course. Many of you are familiar with the capstone program. We've come here and bothered you a number of times about this initiative, paying for money. So, by the way, some stream cycling, Dr. Pranay, that's beautiful. Thank you so much for the knowledge. All the bins, you can all, you have, you're very excited. So my students were not tested on macroinvertebrates. They were trained. We practiced it. They did a lot of clutch sampling. And then I told them, "I have no need to assess you in a formal way to assign you a grade because the real test will come when you go to sixth grade camp." And the sixth graders aren't part testing, you know. And you're going to know whether or not you know what you're talking about when you present. And you're sitting beside them, helping them identify, excuse me, identify different insects that they're finding in the stream. And so there was kind of two perspectives I got. We use the app Remind 101 with my students that I can communicate with them. You guys remember how Double A, for their boots, when they're upstream, et cetera. So I was giving text messages and the students were riding the bus on the way to camp about like, "Oh my gosh, Mrs. Loker, we're so nervous. These kids are so excited. And we're so nervous." They were on the bus riding with the sixth graders. And so the piece that we're going to add is that we're going to sit down, one of my students came back from camp so wrapped up about what she had done in the stream with them. And she wrote out a script that goes in and out, I think, with what you provided to them there. Word for word, play by play, what we did and how it went when they were in the stream. So they gave that feedback. And then I got to go with them when they returned back from camp. And they were recuperating about the experience. And it was obvious that there was no assessment I could have done that would have made that learning experience more valuable than they learned and working with a junior, a high school student. And they were so, they sent me photos of what looked like a lobster. And it was a grayfish. Grandad grayfish. This is like the granddaddy of the camp experience. And I was seeing from my students who were there in capstone, the cool macros that they were finding in the stream and getting to identify with the sixth graders. And they were just as excited as the sixth graders for about what they were finding. It was beautiful. So that initiative, when I can tell my kids that they get the opportunity not only to be sixth grade camp counselors, but the potential to teach a lesson and be integral to the success of camp and the stream study station is, it's, my kids are really, they were so excited from last year. And some of them know, my incoming class know that they're going to have this opportunity as well. And we're really excited.
Super excited. Every now and then you have a really great idea. This was one of them. This was one of them. It's just really, it's really just super exciting. You know, this past year, I really worked with my sense schedule to make sure that I could go and attend all three elementary sessions at camp with Mr. Parker's approval. And I was exhausted because it's been a really long time since I've been at camp. I used to be a lifer up there, all three schools in the beginning for a very long time. And then that stopped when I forgot how exhausted I was because I aged. I did age. But this is going to just resolve that. I'm going to go that first day with each of the elementary buildings and be with those capstone kids and do that transition from modeling that lesson to then completely taking it over and feeling comfortable before I head back home and back to school. So we are really super excited that even though that water filter is not going to work at camp, this partnership, which is way awesome, is going to be perfect. And hopefully carry us on. Because camp's going to go. That's it. Thank you very much.
Their enthusiasm is obvious. Their commitment to camp is obvious. Camp used to be about sixth grade students only and elementary teachers. Today, we have our high school students with the real world experiences. We have more junior high, senior high teachers going to camp than ever because camp's also a part of a transition from sixth to seventh grade. We're talking about STEM activities. Forty-three years we're going strong. It's not by accident that 93, 94% of our kids go every year. And that's the last point that I want to make to you. 93% of our kids go. And the 7% that don't go is because they do want to. And that's okay. But my point is, if you want to go, it doesn't matter your socioeconomic status. It doesn't matter who you are as a student or what special need you may need accommodated. We accommodate it when you go to camp. So thank you very much.
First step towards the next part of the referendum, only for adoption of resolution number 13 to approve sixth grade camp for a range of dates. The movement second. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. On move for adoption of resolution number 14 to approve the 2018 Spring Marching Day in trip to New Orleans.
Second.
The movement second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. On move for adoption of resolution number 15 to authorize the administration to state bids for the purchase or lease of two replacement trucks and vehicles. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. Okay. I'll put together our resolution numbers 17 and 18 and move for the adoption of--
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. I'm sorry, I need to go back. I'll bundle sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen to approve all of that. The movement second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. And on move for adoption of resolution number 19 to approve the Bearcat EST Transition Program.
Second.
The movement second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. On move for the adoption of resolution number 20 to approve the San Vincent College Prevention Project Service Liberty Agreement.
Second.
The movement second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. In our final for last, items on the spread for the agenda, number 21, 22, and 23, to approve the Pennsylvania Educated Care in House Contact for Service to approve the Liberty Pointy Danger Autocare Special Education Service Agreement and to approve the USDA STDC Act grant.
Second.
The movement second. Any questions on resolutions number 11, 20, 23? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. And the next quarterly committee meeting will be on September 19th, that product initiative will be accepted. Thank you. Begin the finance report by bundling the first three resolutions, number 24 to approve the treasurer's report, number 25 to approve the payment of bills, and number 26 to approve the year-end budget range of earth.
Second.
The movement second. Any questions, folks? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. No questions. Mrs. Rocker, how you doing? Absolutely. And at this point, we'd like to introduce Jessica Urbana, who is the president of the Vera Partners Education Foundation, to talk to you about being grant for the 17th.
Thank you everyone for having me here this evening to share with you information about the foundation. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I want to show you.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Yes, I think it's interesting that that is under finance and under student activity and recreation of the dental. My question whether that's such a good student activity, but would you keep that going? Going to begin as a family on that recreation. Really, exactly. We shouldn't even have to talk about it. Sorry. It's okay. Can you hear that? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Please, all these operations plan, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Alouds. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number thirty to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second.
Move in second, any questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number thirty-three, which is Thursday, September the first. Today we have a high school students with the real world experiences. We have more junior high, senior high teachers going to camp than ever because camp's also a part of a transition from sixth to seventh grade. We're talking about STEM activities. Forty-three years of going strong, it's not by accident that ninety-three, ninety-four percent of our kids go every year. And that's the last point that I don't make to you. Ninety-three percent of our kids go. And the seven percent that don't go, it's because they do want to. And that's okay. But my point is, if you want to go, it doesn't matter your socioeconomic status, it doesn't matter who you are as a student or what special need you may need accommodated. We accommodate it when you go to camp. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. First step towards the next part of forever, I'll move for adoption of resolution number thirteen to approve sixth grade camp for a range of dates. Second. Move in second, any comments? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number fourteen to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number fourteen to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Yes, I think it's interesting that that is under finance and under student activity and recreation of the dental. My question whether that's such a good student activity, but would you keep that going? Going to begin as a family on that recreation. Yeah, really, exactly. We shouldn't even have to talk about it. Sorry. It's okay. Can you hear that? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Please, all these operations plan, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Alouds. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number thirty to approve camp orders and move all the other things. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty to approve a better cat EST transmission program. Second. Move in second, any comments or questions? Alouds in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No questions. And I'll move for the adoption of resolution number twenty-three, which is Thursday, September the first. Thursday, September the first. Fourth, Friday, November, 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 November,[1526.19]